Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the May 9th, 2022 Select Board Meeting. We are out of executive session, and I call this meeting a regular open session to order at 7:01 PM. And this evening, we have two special guests, two Eagle Scouts, Abigail Phillips and Marie Hurst, who are going to lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, girls. So first, we would like to recognize both of you because you are our first female Eagle Scouts in North Andover, and we are so very proud of you and all the hard work that you've put into your projects and all the years of service that you've accomplished. And you also created a subdivision, correct, of Troop 87G and Venture Crew 87 within the Boy Scouts of America, correct? Yeah, okay. So do you guys want to come up and tell us about your Eagle Scout projects a little bit? Or not? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Or you can sit, yeah, or you can come sit, too. Very informal.
So I'm Abigail. My Eagle project was a set of shelves for Neighbors in Need, which is a nonprofit in Lawrence. Specifically, they recently got a new warehouse to store all of their donated goods. And part of the rules with that is that they have to keep their donated goods off the ground. But since it was a new warehouse, they didn't really have the useful shelves and stuff to do that. And so I built shelves for Neighbors in Need so that they could store their goods and continue helping families in the Merrimack Valley.
That's fabulous. Thank you.
Okay. I'm Marie. My project was a composting toilet at the Giving Garden, which is at Rolling Ridge, which donates a lot of its grown food, like all of its, to Neighbors in Need as well. And they had to have a porta potty there, which, and it costed a lot to rent. So instead of that, we made a, I made a composting toilet for them to save money and use it on like a new irrigation system and more seeds and such. So they're of help more people. And yeah, it's like a clean thing that saves water and stuff, which is cool as well. So, yeah.
That's awesome. So did you guys have to make plan? Like, did you, how does that work?
Yes. So the first thing we had to do was do like just a very rough plan where we had to get it approved by the council. And so once they approved that, then we went sort of more in-depth with our planning. So it started off with just like a basic sort of what we're going to do, what roughly we think we're going to need.
How much it's going to cost, we think.
How much it's going to cost about. And then we had to go in, once it was approved, and do some more specific planning, you know, pricing out things exactly and like coordinating specific workdays to get members of our troop to also help us with building the project because a really big part of it is leading others to do it as well. That's sort of like one of the reasons why they have us do it. So we had to coordinate all of that. And then, once we did that, we would have the building day. And once the project was completed, we had to report the project and the success of it and what we could have done differently, what went well, who helped us, all of that stuff.
Was there fundraising element to it, too?
Yes.
Yeah, a lot of the fundraising element is trying to get your fellow families to donate for you. You go around asking people for donations and stuff, and that's usually how you try and fundraise. Thankfully, for a lot of, people are very generous, and so they will, they will help their, their time, help, money, services for, for you. Um, yeah.
My project costs like around $1,000 to complete on its own, just building the shelves and stuff like that. And so we actually had a ton of generous donors who donated to me for that project. And we actually succeeded in raising well over that amount, like over double the amount. And we actually used that money to buy donated goods for neighbors in need, like diapers and formula.
That's amazing.
For two, two scouts that seem to be shy about speaking and on camera, I'm so impressed at how well you presented it. From all of us who've been there, the learning and still even now, you guys did great. So for two, two people, I could see your faces, you both were like...
I just wasn't really expecting it.
No, but you really did really well.
Thank you.
And great projects.
Thank you so much for coming tonight. We really appreciate it. Anybody else have any questions?
Congratulations, it's such a great achievement.
You have enough to follow.
It's your course for the future. That's what this really is.
Absolutely. It's a big deal when you apply for colleges and jobs. It's one of the things that I think everyone knows. I have two sons that are Eagle Scouts, and every interview they've ever been on, that seemed to be the focus of the conversation. So it's a big deal. And until you've been through it, people sometimes don't know. It's a big deal. It's a lot of work.
And how much work, right? A lot of work, right?
A lot of work, and you've got to get it done before you're 18.
We have about two days to say.
Maybe Wednesday, this year.
Well, I'm going to tell this story that I told before to the audience, but I'm going to tell you that one of the Eagle Scouts in one of my son's troops was on his way to the council to turn in his paperwork. It was his 18th birthday, and it was about quarter of five, and he couldn't find it.
Oh, no.
But he made it. It wasn't mine. It wasn't mine. He wouldn't have lived to survive that moment. No, I'm only teasing, of course. But yeah, so it, people really have no idea what a big deal. And thank you to the parents because they are a huge part of your success, that friendly reminder. So congratulations.
I don't think this is the first Eagle Scout in the Hurst family either, is it?
So you were well briefed, yeah.
We have a couple of certificates for you. It says, "In recognition of becoming an Eagle Scout, co-founding Troop 87G and Venture Crew 87, a group within the Boy Scouts of America's adventure-based venturing program, your leadership, dedication, and hard work among the youth in North Andover are greatly appreciated. Congratulations on your accomplishments, and thank you on the behalf of the town of North Andover." And Marie Hurst, "In recognition of making history as the first girl in northern district to earn Eagle title, Marie Hurst helped look to co-founder the Venture Crew 87, a group within the Boy Scouts of America's adventure-based venturing program. Your leadership, dedication, and hard work among the youth in North Andover greatly appreciated. Congratulations on your accomplishments." Thank you. We'll take a section. Sure. I don't know. Honestly. Wait, wait, we'll get you.
I'll slide the chair.
Get out there and start.
Congratulations. Can I leave, too? All right. That's, that's so awesome. So glad that they could join us tonight. All right, we will move on to public comment. Do we have any public comment tonight? Yeah, sure, of course.
Regarding the warrant, the town warrant, and I know it was stopped printing at some point because I used to get it all the time, and I would read it, and I'd leave it on my counter for days because it was voluminous. And I'm, my, my question just is like, I know it's posted on the town website. Is there a postcard or anything that goes out to the town to say it's out there? So I don't know if...
It'll be in this week, and we'll send out an announcement that there's printed copies available downstairs. We'll have printed copies at town meeting as well.
But when it goes on, so here's my request, is that it's online, and, and people can read it ahead of time, and it takes a while to get through it. So just, I know the cost of it is, is one of the reasons why it was stopped to be distributed. So my request would be, could there be something as a reminder for people who forget about reading it ahead of time, just to say that the town meeting's coming up on this date in like a postcard form or something that comes in the mail for people that will use it as a reminder? I don't, I, I print it out because I don't want to sit at a screen, continue to sit at a screen. So that's just a formal request from someone who needs a different kind of reminder. So, okay, that's all. Thank you.
You said they'll be downstairs this week or next week?
Well, I printed it, so I'm good.
All right. Thank you.
And anyone that wants it ahead of time can just call us, and we'll print one.
And print it. Yep, okay. Perfect. That's great to know.
Anyone who has to remember, that's the question.
Yeah, it was in the tax bill. I think, you know, the flyer that goes in with the tax bills. It was in there.
He doesn't read the town warrant.
Anyone else? Nope. All right. So we will move on to governmental reports. Our first one is, we have an update from the Master Plan Implementation Committee, and we have John Strauss with us. Hi, John, how are you?
Do y'all see me? Hear me?
Yes.
All right. This is the second time I've presented to you guys, and every time you give me a tough act to follow, so. But credit to the, to the two Eagle Scouts and their achievements, so. So I have two updates for you tonight. One is our quarterly progress report. And I'm not sure if you have copies of that or not, but I'll recite it. So to members of the Select Board, this is the town of North Andover Master Plan Implementation Committee's sixth quarterly progress report on town-related activities and the continued implementation of strategies and recommendations as proposed in the town's 2018 master plan. The primary focus of the committee during this quarter was to continue to develop a new website that provides up-to-date information relative to the implementation status of all the elements and strategies contained in the master plan. This site, which is now available through the town's website, categorizes each of the seven elements. It provides both an overarching summary and a detailed breakdown of completed action items that fulfill the individual strategies for each of the elements. So that, that was our big accomplishment last quarter. The Master Plan Implementation Committee objectives for the next quarter include sustaining discussions and outreach with groups, organizations, and town bodies responsible for implementing selected strategies, to continue to identify strategies which may well be underway or completed through active and/or proposed projects, initiative, governance. And, that's it. So we're happy to answer any questions you may have about our progress. So pending that, if you have any questions.
Yeah, absolutely.
Hi, John, thank you for the update, and, and thank you for all the hard work you guys do. I know there's, it's a big task. Even getting a website together like that is a big task. Is there anything that we as a board can do to support you in any way? Is there anything you need from us?
Just, the, the big thing is just communication as, as information passes along to get in touch with economic and community development, just to keep them abreast of any major items that transpire that would be applicable, so we can update the, the website accordingly. That's, that's the big one. So if you haven't had a chance to look at the website, it's only been live for a couple of weeks now, but it's, it's pretty robust. We continuously update it almost on a daily basis at this point. We keep track of our changes, so as you, as you click on it, week by week, you'll see additional information posted. So it's, it's up to date as we can keep it. So, and it's just, you know, it's, it's our big measuring stick. You know, we, we went through the, the whole hassle, not hassle, but the, you know, the to create the 2018 master plan. And unlike a lot of municipalities, we actually want to make sure it gets enacted. And not only, not only does it, do we use it to our advantage, but how do we also measure how it's being used? And that's what this website hopes to, to accomplish, so.
Has that been published out by Sarah? Has she put out a blurb on that one? Yeah, great.
So, and then if, if, if you don't mind, hot off the press from our meeting earlier tonight, we have, we've just finished, hold on a second, let me find it here. We've, our committee has just completed our evaluation of the proposed Royal Crest project. And if you allow me to share that letter with you, if you have time on the agenda here.
That would be great, John.
Sure.
Okay. So this is going to be a little wordy, I apologize in advance. In advance of the upcoming town meeting, the Town Master Plans Implementation Committee has recently completed a revised analysis of the proposed Royal Crest redevelopment with regard to how it fits into the town's master plan that was completed in 2018. As you're aware, the MPIC is charged with tracking, educating the public about, and aiding the advancement of the recommendations set forth in the master plan. The MPIC completed an initial analysis of the Royal Crest redevelopment plan in March of 2021. Since then, the redevelopment plan has evolved and, and has been revised based on discussions with the Select Board and Planning Board, along with much community outreach and feedback. As this plan has been updated in preparation for voting on several warrant articles related to the necessary zoning amendments required to allow this project proceed, the MPIC revisited their prior analysis based on the latest available information provided by the developers and the proposed development agreement term sheets prepared by the Select Board. The MPIC's evaluation process first focused on identifying the particular strategies in the master plan that they found applicable to the proposed Royal Crest project. Of the 103 as stated in the master plan, the MPIC found 20 strategies deemed applicable to this study. Of those 20 strategies, the MPIC evaluation centered on determining if the Royal Crest development would have a positive, negative, or neutral impact on fulfilling the particular goals in question based on a strictly objective analysis of the information provided to the committee. Upon completion of this exercise, the MPIC has determined the proposed project will have a positive impact with regard to achieving 15 of the stated strategies of the 2018 master plan. Upon further review, two of the goals were found to not be applicable, and of the remaining strategies, three were found to have a neutral influence. In other words, neither positive nor, or negative. It's important to note that the MPIC is not making a determination on whether or not they are in favor of this project moving forward, or if they are against it. Rather, the MPIC's intention is strictly to evaluate this project as currently proposed and determine if it falls in line with the master plan that was created to guide future development in the town. We thank you for your consideration of this analysis and hope the town will use it as a tool to help guide their decision-making on this undertaking.
Thank you, John. That's great. We know how much work that you guys put into evaluating it and having to go through all of those criteria, and then to evaluate the 20 that you found that were applicable to Royal Crest. So really, and I find it very helpful, the spreadsheet that you guys have developed. You know, it's data-driven, it's fact-driven, it's, like you said, it's impartial, it's just based on what's happening, what the facts are. So thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
Any questions?
Yeah, it's a great letter. Now, what's our plan for publishing it or for making that public? I know we, you know, obviously, it's been read into the record tonight, so it's going to be as part of this public record for this meeting. Is it going to be sent out, or is it going to be pushed, published on the website already?
I believe John plans on, plans on sharing the letter at town meeting, right, John?
That's, it will be shared at town meeting. We, we just finished the wording at our, our meeting about an hour ago, so it's going to be sent over to the Select Board shortly.
Okay.
Once it's signed. And yeah, the intention is, is if it, if, if you find it appropriate to, to share that at town meeting.
Absolutely. I think that would be great. Anyone else?
I would just add, while I sit as represent, representative of the Select Board, it really is something to see the combined efforts and care in detail that the, the members are really putting into this and really care about making sure that they're working with the right data, that being as objective as possible, and keeping, again, in mind that the mission here is lining up what's being proposed with what our master plan is. And that's, staying laser-focused isn't, isn't always easy. And John, I appreciate, you know, your work in corralling, corralling the crew, getting this done, so thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I concur, and I appreciate so much how objective you guys are in your analysis. So, and I know it takes a lot of work, so thank you very much to your whole team.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. I appreciate you coming.
Thanks a lot. Thanks for having me.
Thank you. Have a good night. All right, we'll move on to our meeting schedule for July to December. Has everybody had a chance to take a peek at it?
So in the past, we've only meet, met once in July. I'm actually not available July 11th, so just wanted to let you know that. We do have two scheduled right now.
Oh, well, isn't it once in July and once in August, or?
I think last year, we did once in July and once in August.
Yeah. It's, it's up to you.
But this is usually...
A guide, and things can, can be changed. Not too often, but they do. We like to make sure everybody gets to the meetings whenever they can, so.
So we have a June 20th, right?
Yes.
And then Melissa, you said you're not available on the 11th?
Yes.
Should we do the 18th?
And just not do July 25th?
Instead of the 25th.
Right.
Just drop the 11th and move the 25th to the 18th?
Yeah.
Makes sense.
And then we usually do our goals...
In August.
In August.
And then just do one August meeting.
Yeah, like what if we did like August 15th and then August 29th for the goals?
Okay.
Or something like that.
August 29th is not good for me.
Okay.
Is somebody moving to college?
Yeah.
Just guessing.
Well, we could, so is she actually moving in that day, or?
I actually cannot tell you for certain.
Okay.
But I can tell you that I have to be there.
Well, we could always do that. Always float the goals day, it doesn't have to be Monday, it can be earlier in the day. So we can always work that out.
Actually, within the, I expect within the next two weeks, I would be able to nail it down completely.
Yeah, we can schedule that accordingly.
Yeah, why don't we just wait until you get...
Yeah, that's fine. So we could do it August me, what did we say, the 15th?
August 15th.
Yep. And then...
18th in July and 15th in August.
First the 8th, yeah.
Thank you.
Great. Anything else? No? All right. Then I'll take a motion to enter into licensing.
Motion to enter into licensing?
I'll second. Motion in a second. All those in favor? I'm all yours.
All righty. So we're starting off with a public hearing tonight. It's an application for alteration of the premises from Jager Enterprises Company, DBA Tavern on High, 18 High Street. Do we have someone here to speak to this?
Yes.
Okay.
Would you like to make a motion? I'd like to make a motion to move into public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
For the application for alteration of premises.
Thank you. All in favor?
Bye.
All right. Okay, and we have to speak to this?
Yeah, they're in the back. They're hiding.
They're hiding in the corner. So just pretty much tell you what we're, why we're altering. So we're altering, we're currently extending our patio from 20 seats to 80 seats. So it just, the patio bumps out like another 15 feet, so that's the only reason why we're altering it, just to cover the more ground that we're moving out.
Are there any capacity issues regarding the licensing? I didn't see that there's anything that related to capacity as original license serving outside, anything like that.
No. It pretty much conforms to, it's the same thing as, we've been doing the extended patio with COVID. It's pretty much the same exact area, we're just making it a permanent patio now.
Is it taking any parking spots?
No.
Is it confined?
That, that you've had that many more seats? Do we know that?
Yes. RCG, the landlord, sent that all to the town, the structural, structural engineer, they all went over through all that.
Okay.
It says everything there, all the...
Yeah, I noticed that. Parking sometimes...
Is there going to be any entertainment out there or anything?
We haven't gotten that far.
It will potentially be some live music.
Oh, okay. Earlier live music, not, not, not late night.
I'm just curious if that needs an entertainment license for outdoors. But that's not what we have tonight for.
We'll review their car and obtain the license.
And see what, what it allows and what doesn't allow. Take a look at it.
Looks like a nice, nice extension.
I think this will be a welcome addition.
Yeah, we're super, super excited.
We were there last night for dinner, so, yeah.
It was a long day yesterday.
He said I was a little busy.
Yeah.
We were on the tail end of it.
Well, it's interesting to see your business grow and evolve.
Yes, thank you, yeah. It's been a long couple of years, but we're getting through it.
No, you're a great addition to the area. I know everybody really enjoys it.
Thank you very much.
How long until the bigger patio is ready?
We're hoping by the end of the month.
Fabulous.
Yeah. It's not like a huge alter to any of the structures or anything, it's just pretty much building out the decking, and that's it.
Thanks.
Any other questions for our hearing?
No.
That's good. I'll just hear a motion to close the hearing then, if we're all set.
Motion. So vote? I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Sure, absolutely. And now, we just move on to vote on this application for the alteration of the premises.
Do you want to wait to hear if you got it? Yeah. I would move approval.
She's just gonna...
I'm just having a little fun with you. I'm sure you'd rather know.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Now you're good to roll.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did you have a question?
Oh.
John Johnson from Sutton Pond. Now that Avalon has closed the loop, we're now in a very confined area of buildings down there, with a pond in the middle, thank God. We're very concerned about sound because it reflects right across, and there's all hard surface buildings in that area. And parking, there's a major problem with parking almost continually in that area. So it's just, you know, we're very concerned, and nobody's moved into Avalon yet, so God knows what's going to, how that's going to affect things. But noise and parking is, we're concerned about.
Well, we will get a chance then to obtain a license and begin... Entertainment, if you, if you... So, yeah, that'll be covered under the license, the entertainment license.
And parking will be obviously part of that per code.
Sorry, sorry.
The parking, there's no parking changes, right?
Okay.
Let me ask her.
Okay. All right. Our next is an application for one-day all alcohol license from Deborah Ingles of Butler's and Bar's for a wedding reception at Smolak Farms on May 21st, 2020, from 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM in the large...
John Johnson from Sutton Pond. Now that Avalon has closed the loop, we're now in a very confined area of buildings down there. With a pond in the middle, thank God. We're very concerned about sound because it reflects right across and there's all hard surface buildings in that area. And parking, there's a major problem with parking almost continually in that area. So it's just, you know, we're, we're very concerned and nobody's moved into Avalon yet. So God knows what's gonna, how that's going to affect things. But noise and parking is, we're concerned about.
Entertainment, if you, if you. So yeah, that'll be covered under the license, the entertainment license.
And parking will be obviously part of that per code.
Great, the parking, there's no parking changes, right?
Good.
Let me ask her.
All right, our next is an application for a one-day all alcohol license from Deborah Ingles of Butler's and Bar's for a wedding reception at Smolak Farms on May 21st, 2020, from 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM in the large event tent. And again, they're asking for a waiver of the police detail. I don't see anybody here to speak to it. Thoughts?
This wedding is expecting 120 people.
So same as the one we did last time. Again, this is just one of the ones that came in, parts them getting the catering license.
Catering license, right.
So there's a little. Lots.
On the 21st, that's when we get it. You don't see the refer to Saturday?
Saturday. Saturday. 120, yes.
Mr. Chair, I'll move approval with the waiver of the police detail.
Okay.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And then our last is an application for a livery license from Jackson Petit Homme of Jackie Transportation LLC. Do we have someone here to speak to this? Please.
Hi, I'm Jackson. I'm just provide this service for some, I live in the community. I see that there is a lot of requests for airport ride. So I mean, about three months ago, I decided to open the business and try to provide this service. I'm doing mostly airport and downtown Boston too. So that's what I just really happy that I, for my first time opening a small business. That's all I want to say.
How many vehicles do you have?
For now, I have one registered with like, for the business, for the livery. I just started with one and I'm the driver.
Got you.
That's a, the Tahoe, right?
Yeah, Tahoe.
2021, that's a big, that's a big vehicle.
It's big.
Big.
Good for an airport job.
Yeah, for sure. Great.
Any other questions from?
No, I can see, I can see where there would be a demand for it.
So do you do Uber too or Lyft?
I used to do Uber and Lyft and I lived here in town for over like eight years. And I see how they request a lot of airport ride and I decide to.
Oh, I see. Okay, good idea.
Do it directly.
Yep.
Yeah, start your own business. That's fabulous.
Thank you.
That's great.
Good luck. I hope you're very successful.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'll move approval of the request for a livery license from Jackson Petit Homme for Jackson, Jack, Jackie Transportation LLC.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Also, good luck.
Thank you.
Hope the gas prices go down.
Yeah, right?
Works every way. I know they've all, they've all adjusted their prices for rides to airports. So expensive now.
Yep.
Okay, and that.
The training.
Yeah.
In the subway.
It does sort of point to the value of public transportation. That covers our agenda for licensing.
Motion to move out of licensing.
Thank you. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Back to you, Madam Chair.
All right, we're on to new business and we have a revised senior citizen workoff program policy. And we have our town assessor with us, Bill Mitchell. How are you, Bill?
Hey, Bill. Good evening, everybody. How are you?
Good.
It's always a pleasure to spend my one day evening with these fine group of people. So thank you for having me. Did everybody get a copy of that revised guidelines?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, we did.
Yes.
Okay. So I'll just go over highlights of it. The last time this was updated, looked like it was in 2019. So what had happened, what spurred this was the minimum wage had changed from January 1st. Yeah, which keyed me into, I know we pay the participants' minimum wage from the Commonwealth. So with that, I, I took a peek at the guidelines and realized we hadn't updated them in a while and researched the votes with our town clerk as well as our town council. And there's been a couple iterations over time since 2009 between the number of participants allowed and the max allowable money contributed to this program. And so through time, after three town meetings and some select board votes, the last vote being done on July 15, 2019, which was to raise it to 60 participants in the program. And then reviewing the statute, the statute allows us to have anyone over 60 participate in the program, current minimum wage of the Commonwealth and a maximum of $1,500 per participant allowed for an abatement. So with those guidelines reviewed, I spoke with the senior center director Kathy Schell, spoke with Lynn Savage, met with Melissa and the other people that oversee this program, participate in managing the program. And after one talks with them, the, the changes in front of you basically are to do a little bit of housekeeping on the guidelines that were introduced in 19. And that was to reflect the statute. Back in 2012, they allowed it to go from a thousand dollar maximum abatement up to 1,500. So that was changed in the document. We did move all of the dates of participation up at the request of the senior center director to allow the participants to start on July 1st, the beginning of the fiscal year. So the application dates that you see in there, along with the decision-making for who can participate in the program, all those dates were moved up to allow that to happen. We added the volunteer and participant release of liability agreement. That was requested by town council as part of the documents applying for the program. And then also put in the submission of a W-4 each year, along with the completion of hours paperwork. That was requested by payroll. And then the hourly rate was finally changed to 1425 an hour with a maximum of $1,500 exemption per person. So those are the highlights of the changes that were made in the guidelines. And after speaking with Melissa, I think it's just a good practice to have it presented to the select board every so often, especially when an hourly change is made or any other program changes are needed. And so that's why this is presented to you tonight with an amendment date of 4/27/2022, which is when I revised the program and everybody agreed to the changes that you have in front of you today.
Thank you, Bill. I, I think it's important to bring it before us too, so people know about it. You know, it's such a wonderful program that's available. Do you exceed the 60 participants?
Currently, yes. We do exceed the 60. There was some people that were on a waiting list last year after talking with Kathy Schell. And so we're hopeful that we can, you know, we'll constantly fill those. It's a lot of work for the senior center to administer that program, make sure everybody has volunteer hours. But it's a very successful program and it helps a lot elderly out in our communities. So yeah, we're happy to say that it fills up over the last couple of years. So that's good.
Yeah, with the rising prices throughout everything that we purchase, I am sure there's people that really appreciate that program.
Well, I'd go further and say, I mean, we moved it to 60 a couple of years ago. And, and in a general sense, I'd advocate for us to aggressively revisit that limit as often as we can. You know, there's a lot of balances here. I understand that. But kind of to your point, Rosemary, it, you know, it's just incrementally more difficult for people who are, have a financial squeeze or elderly now. And so anything that we can do as a community, whether it be through this program or some variation of, I, I would guess kind of challenge us to figure out a way how we can accommodate more, more people. Maybe there's another mechanism. I don't know what that is. You know, you're, you know, kind of calling your expertise. But anytime we could expand this, I mean, just going from 50 to 60, there was, that was significant to us. So anytime we could make this bigger, I'd like to see us try and find a way to make it bigger.
Is there any group of assessors that talk about this in ways that they might do it differently that would increase the numbers or anything like that? I, I was talking to you. My question was, is there any group of assessors that you can kind of send notices out? Has anybody come up with a better idea of increasing the numbers or being able to increase the numbers for this type of program or anything like that that, as Chris just said, that, to see if we could spread the wealth, so to speak, especially with these times right now. I mean, we all, everybody knows that everything's going up and it's got to be hurting the seniors. So go ahead.
Yeah, so we, we, you know, being involved with the associations like I am, that's, that's great question because you're, you're able to network with other assessors from across the state and find out if there's other guidelines they're adopting. With this particular one, you can certainly just not limit the participants if you wanted to. It is, it is up to the local select board to do that. You don't have to limit the number of participants in any way. We, what we can do is, you know, continue to monitor the program. If it does exceed 60 participants again this year, you know, I think it's important to bring that to your attention. And maybe we do that. Maybe we do lift up the limit to more participants and make it more successful. Also, every community is different as well. You know, with all of the other exemptions that we offer, a senior means tested exemption, the circuit breaker tax, if that's adopted locally, that may change a decision on some of these other programs as well as other sections out there of the laws that allow our community to match an exemption. For instance, if we have the senior elderly exemption of $500 per person, you know, there's a statute to allow the community to double that and give seniors a thousand dollars a year. However, it's always a financial decision because right now we're reimbursed for any of these state exemptions we give from the, from the state. But if we double that, then that becomes unreimbursable for us. So it does become a financial burden on the overlay account at some point. And, but happy to talk to Melissa and Lynn and you all about some of the impacts that we can review to see if we want to adopt any of those changes. But currently, based on the exemptions we adopt, I think, you know, upping this program to even go into like 75 participants, something like that, might be the next step.
Okay. That's good. Thank you.
What do we usually have, like on average, on the waiting list, Bill?
Yeah.
Well, what number of people do we normally have on the waiting list?
So last year, there was only about five.
Yeah, so let me ask this question. If we have that situation this year, can we all, can we come back and amend it after the fiscal year?
Yeah, that's what we did last year.
We did that, okay.
We have to watch, we have to check the overlay account.
Yeah, available.
It'll bear it, yeah. Okay.
That was my question. The money comes from the overlay. Yeah, we just want to make sure we can help as many seniors.
Assuming you have enough work to keep everybody busy.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a great program. As long as the department sign up.
Melissa will just fill it with something else.
Yeah, especially we have a few things going on.
Yeah, no, thank, thank you, Bill, for coming. I appreciate it. It's a wonderful program and we want to help as many seniors as we can.
And it was very nice of you to still have your tie on, be dressed professionally at quarter of eight at night. So thank you for that.
He always looks professional.
Absolutely, always happy. Happy to help.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
All right, so we have to just approve that?
Yeah.
Please.
I'll move that the select board approve the revised senior center workoff program policy as presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Aye. All right, we have a new program policy.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Bill. Have a good night.
You too. Take care.
And Madam Sheriff, I could recognize Leah Moore. Who is the person that manages the program at the senior center and Kathy for all of her hard work. They do, they dedicate a lot of time to this program and they're really proud of it. So I just want to recognize them.
They should be, yeah. This is great. It's one of those things that we have in town that we probably don't talk about enough.
Right.
And it's a good benefit.
It's really important.
Yeah, it's, it's very important. All right, so we are moving on to signing the final development agreement with Trinity.
So I'm going to the next.
We have a final development agreement with Trinity and we also have a final development agreement with Merrimack. The development agreement with Trinity, I didn't get the final language until about six o'clock. We were going back and forth on a few final things, which means that you all didn't get to review it. And I would be more comfortable if you all read it before you ratified it. Yeah, so I'm thinking that perhaps we may just call like a special virtual meeting at some point over maybe next week just to get it signed in advance at a town meeting. We can put Merrimack on too. We ended up getting that one done first. It was a rush, a race to the finish. But they are both done, intensively agreed upon. And really, they're just memorializing the terms of the development agreement. But there was some legalese that we were just working through. And I think, you know, obviously, we want everyone to be able to read it and be comfortable with it before we vote on it. So we'll work on getting something posted, even if we just do it virtually and go through it quickly. Okay? So. No problem. And we're not taking any action on item C right now either. So I'm moving us right along.
All right, so we are skipping P and C and we're moving on to D. We have an application from Monica Manning of Kind Senior Care LLC to use the town common on May 20th, 2022, from 3:00 to 5:00 PM. Am I in the wrong spot?
We're gonna skip that. That was C, right?
We're skipping C, the collective bargaining unit with the fire.
When is the, I should know this because I've been helping the festival committee. When is their date?
Festival, the chief sharing?
Yes.
The 21st.
Okay. The only thing is, I, I think they do, I might be wrong. They do some preliminary set up for the next day. I, I could be wrong.
They never ask for more than just the one day.
Okay.
Yeah.
Again, I'll.
They, I know they, they had it from the whole morning, but I didn't, they didn't put anything on it for the day before.
But this is a small.
Small gathering.
Like a business picnic.
Okay. It should all work out. And maybe they'll come back the next day and celebrate chief sharing.
That'd be nice.
Any other questions? Please, to the town common. No? Okay. All right, I'll take a motion for approval.
I'll second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor? Aye. It'll be a busy weekend on the, on the common.
Do we find anything more about the cows?
Oh, no, no, what?
He's usually the one that organizes it.
Maybe we should have someone dress up as a cow and just toss a ball and see where it lands. That'd be just as fun.
I was just reading how you can get insurance for that. As a town, if you're offering a prize, like there's literally, you know, the hole in one prize insurance you get. Same company. Actually, you can buy insurance as a community to cover that. Yeah.
Interesting.
And honest to God, it's a fabulous article. They were saying literally, because some things you have a lot of statistics on, some things they don't. So they have to go and, they just figure it out themselves manually. And this was one of the ones where they literally went out.
Someone's gonna win though. It's guaranteed. Someone, someone's gonna win.
Right, but they, but some communities have sort of bon, big bonus prizes. And so to offer the big bonus prize, they get insurance. So you could, so just a thought for maybe next year, we could up the prize and buy cow pie insurance to cover our risk. I don't know, just.
I'll call Maya.
There you go.
Those at home, that's, that's.
Two says municipal insurance.
Well, just trying to figure out another way to make it exciting.
I'm gonna talk to the festival committee. I kind of like my own silly idea that I just blasted out. Get a cow, someone dress like a cow and then you just toss it up in the air and see where it lands.
Why not?
It'd be kind of fun.
Keep it interesting.
People love that.
Oh, they do. Absolutely. All right, let's see. We'll move on to our consent items. We've got two affordable unit resale waiver of right. We have the waiver of right for first refusal for four harvest drive units 212 as well as three harvest drive unit 105.
Madam Sheriff, we don't believe you voted on the.
Kind senior care gathering.
I thought we did.
We don't believe you did.
Oh, okay. I'll take a motion for item D.
We're foggy in the corner.
Common on May 20th from 3:00 to 5:00 for an employee gathering.
A motion. A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Thank you. We were too excited, we were too excited about the cows.
I thought so too. We're a little punchy tonight.
I don't know, we're, we're not, we're not doing well on the side. Too excited about the cows.
Yeah, we got distracted by the cows situation.
If you did, we voted twice.
That's all right. Twice is nice.
Better twice than not at all.
All right, so yes to the 20th. Now, we'll move on to the consent items. We typically waive our right of first refusal for affordable units. And we'll be doing so on four harvest drive unit 212 and three harvest drive unit 105. And I'll take a motion.
I move that the select board approve all the consent items as presented.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Well, I have a different question.
Sure.
I recently saw, and I don't know if it was published by the town or not, but it was about an affordable unit.
Yes.
Is that one of these or what was the story behind it? Because I've never seen that advertised like that before, an affordable housing opportunity.
Yeah, they share them with us so that we've been sharing them.
So, it's from this, from one of these two units?
It's one of those units, but it's on harvest drive. It's another harvest drive unit.
Yeah, I don't know. But I'm not sure if it's one of those.
I don't know if it's through CHAPA, but it is through CHAPA. So, yeah, same thing. They just shared it with us and then we've been sharing them.
Okay, great. Yeah, I've never seen that before. I like that.
That's great.
Okay, that was my question.
No, that's totally fine. That's great. And yeah, you can, I guess, for our audience, you can keep an eye on our social media for those posts. And you can apply for down payment assistance through our Affordable Housing Trust, which is another fabulous program that we have in town that we don't probably talk about enough. So.
We should get somebody from.
That could report on all of these.
Yeah. Report on that.
Put you on the spot, Lori.
I don't think he would be happy.
He would be happy. Okay. All right, that being said, I'll take a motion. Or a vote. We have a motion and a second. We'll take a vote, right? All those in favor?
Aye.
We don't know anymore.
All right, and now we'll approve our open session minutes of April 27, 2022. Does anybody have any edits or comments?
I'm going to move approval of our open session minutes from April 27, 2022, as written.
A motion.
I'll second.
And a second. All those in favor? Aye. Approved. And we're back to old business for town meeting preparation because that's next Tuesday.
It is. I was just going to remind everyone of that at 6:30.
At the field house. And.
Inside.
Inside. And there's still babysitting available. So, if you want to register for babysitting, it is being held through community partners, I believe.
Community programs.
Community programs, thank you. And you can still, the link is on our website to register. It's from 6:30 to 10:00 p.m. and it is free. And you can call 978-794-3080 as well. And so, we only have one article left to take a position on. And unfortunately, we cannot yet take a position on it because Dee and I are meeting with that union tomorrow. So, other than that, we are in pretty good shape for town meeting.
And just to reiterate what our town moderator has said a few times, it will be in the field house.
Yes.
It will be, there's chairs as well as the bleachers.
Yes.
There's, there will be a section if you want to be masked and socially distanced. That will be in the cafeteria.
Correct.
And if you want a mask, if you don't want a mask, and we are following the Board of Health's, there are recommendations. So.
We are.
We are on schedule for May 17th at 6:30 at the field house.
This Tuesday.
This Tuesday.
Coming up, a week from tomorrow.
Yes.
I like that you mentioned that there are chairs available, which would be particularly helpful to elderly and people who have some disabilities and they need to sit.
Absolutely.
And it's actually better than sleeping. It's sleeping. Oh, my gosh. That's a long time.
No, we're not going to be there that long.
Instead of going up into the bleachers, especially if you need back support. So, do try to get there early. And those seats should really be left for those who could use them the most. So, but, so don't be afraid to come. There will be seats with backs.
There will be seats and there will be audiovisual up in the rafters for everybody so that you can see all the presentations and hear everything. And there are warrants available if you want prior to town meeting. They'll be printed.
If you want a warrant grill, just let us know and we can pick you one grill as well.
That's fantastic.
That's great. Anything else about town meeting?
Nope, that's it.
We'll be starting promptly at 6:30. Any town manager reports?
Just a brief update on aggregation, our electrical aggregation. So, as you know, our contract is up on June 30th. And unfortunately, rates are not at a good place right now. We were, we were considering doing an extended blend, but that would have made the rate increase now. And I think people are expecting it to be the same until June 30th, so we decided not to do that. But people should be aware that there is going to be an increase to the rate on July 1st, whether you're in the electrical aggregation or not, unfortunately, in just the nature of where we are right now. Laurie and I are considering and talking with Andrew about whether or not there is any programs we could do using Appa funding for some relief. I think that would be an ideal program to look into. And so, we're looking at that right now. But just so people are aware, there will be an increase. However, remember as well that you can leave the program and go back into the program. So, if the rate we end up deciding on is more than the national grid rate, you could leave and then come back in when the rate bottoms back out again. So, we will be sending a lot of information out as this comes upon us. But we didn't want to, we didn't want to make it hurt earlier than necessary. So.
Appreciate that.
And that's it. Thank you.
Any select board comments?
Absolutely. So, something that, actually, I give my, my wife full, full credit for this. There's a group nonprofit called E-N-G-I-N, E-N-G-I-N, which is a nonprofit organization that's pairing Ukrainian youths with English speakers. And the way this is being done is through a free online conversational practice and kind of a cross-cultural. And this was put together by some Ukrainian folks to try and help all those folks that have lost their jobs in Ukraine who speak English. And of course, there are many employers in countries that are looking to hire these folks. But gaining confidence in conversational English, particularly if you're between the ages of, say, 15 and 30 is, you know, where to get the practice. And so, this group has reached out really across the world and is now connecting with a lot of universities and large employers and now sort of networking around into communities. And our town manager here connected this group with our library to get some information out. And I would just ask our citizens here in North Andover, it's a very simple and easy way to support people in need. It's literally, there's a, there's a website you go to to get kind of qualified, very simple qualification. And it's literally just an hour a week and you're connected via Zoom, in essence, to somebody. And you help them develop their English and maybe their resume or, or letters to, to help them get, get a job. And I just think it's a, for a community like ours, Ukraine's a long way away, but it's a really easy way for all of us to reach somebody. And I would just say, you know, an hour, that's how much time on Facebook over a week. Maybe give that up, the little squeeze of time. So, I'm just kind of asking folks in the community if you go to the, is it going to be on the town website or just at the library?
We're going to have a posting at the library on the bulletin board and our bulletin board downstairs as well.
Great, great. So, it's E-N-G-I-N is the, is the nonprofit. And thank you. I appreciate, let me kind of speak to this for a moment.
And thank you to your wife for bringing that to people's attention.
Really cool. She's watching, right?
She's always watching.
She really watches.
Anybody else?
Just want to wish all the mothers and especially the six fabulous mothers sitting around this table a belated Happy Mother's Day.
Thank you.
Hope everyone had a great day.
And you have a couple very nice mothers at your house as well.
Yes.
It was a nice Mother's Day.
I will congratulate the Sustainability Committee. And I think the garden club did the park clean up at Patriot Park.
They did.
Sustainability did the town wide cleanup. And I saw a lot of people out over those two days. So.
Did they get a total on the, they usually weigh it.
They usually do, but I don't, I don't know.
I'll have to find that out. They usually weigh the bags.
I will say, usually the high school is loaded with trash, but I think those kids may have actually cleaned up a little bit earlier in the season and that was awesome. So, I hope we can keep that up.
Yeah, it was a good day. It was beautiful that day. They had a lot, they had a good turnout.
They had a good turnout. So, thank you to the Sustainability Committee.
All right, so our next meeting will be town meeting, right? Well, no, we might have one in the middle.
Very quick, yes.
But our next big meeting is May 17th at the field house. Town meeting starts at 6:30 and we'll start before that.
One more article.
One more article.
Book sale this weekend.
Yes, book sale.
Book sale, library book sale. Or historical.
Yes.
Historical, at the historic.
At the Rogers Building.
At the Stevens.
At the Stevens Center.
Very exciting.
Friday, Friday afternoon, Saturday and Sunday.
Excellent.
Is it Friday afternoon?
Mm-hmm.
All weekend. Excellent. It's going to be like 80 degrees too.
A lot of people open up, so that's good.
Is air conditioned?
Excellent.
Environmentally.
They've done wonders, right, with the geothermal and all of the solar. Yeah, it's such a wonderful addition to the community. All right, so we will see everybody at town meeting. Remember, your vote counts. Everybody's vote counts. So, we hope to see you there in the field house. And with that, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. We are adjourned.